Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
If you give me just one second, Chair, I just need to pull up. I'm trying to get out of full screen here so I can pull up the.
Can everyone hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Everyone all set? Calling this meeting to order, this is the Property Committee of East Hampton City Council. Today is March 1st, it is 5:01 PM. This meeting is being recorded and conducted remotely in accordance with Governor Baker's order due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I see that our two other members are here, Counselor Erica Flood and Counselor JP Kuzinski, and as well as members of the public and other city officials, including Planner Jeff Bag. We have meetings for minutes, I'm sorry, from I believe it's February 5th that were exceptionally done. Thank you to our Clerk, Counselor Flood. At this time, I'll take a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll move to accept the minutes of February 5th.
A second now.
Motion is second. Counselor Kuzinski.
Yes.
Counselor Flood.
Yes.
And I will also vote to accept the minutes, minutes from February 5th, past 3:00. Before I get to the items of our agenda, are there any members of the public here to speak on any items other than what appears on our agenda today? Either by a show of hands or using the raise hand feature in Zoom. Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to our agenda. Let me just pull that up. Sorry, I have multiple. We only have one agenda item here today and I'll take comments from the counselors in a second, then turn it over to our planner. We have new business to authorize the mayor to execute amended easement agreements on the One Ferry Street redevelopment. There were also discussions earlier this week about ever-source easements. And after going back and forth with the city counselor, city council president, the planner, and the city attorney, I agreed to allow that on to the agenda. These are items that were not submitted into the record from the city council meeting, but the solicitor felt that they were part and parcel. Parcel, not being intended to use as a pun here, to this, these ongoing discussions. And so they will be included today. Before I move on to the city planner, are, do any of the other members of the committee, their counselor Flood or Counselor Kuzinski, have any comments?
I'm looking forward to Jeff's always apt description.
Counselor Flood, do you have anything?
Same, just looking for some guidance and clarification there.
Okay, yeah, I read over the just for the, for the sake of the public, these are amendments to easement agreements that we entered into with the owners of the One Ferry Street project, One Industrial Loft, back in 2019 for a variety of easements around the project site, which include both easements for the sake of construction as well as utility access, et cetera. And these are some amendments essentially to those, those easements, which I think would be, I've read through this, but I think that our planner would probably do a better job of explaining this. Mr. Bag, is it okay if I make you a co-host?
I know that I have, I have some things queued up. We can kind of talk through it that way with the map.
Okay, let me. You are now. Oh. Why is it not? There we go. Okay. Planner Bag, you are now a co-host and I will turn the floor over to you.
Thanks, and we also have the developer and owner of the property here, Mike Michon, so he'll be able to help answer some questions as well, I think.
Perfect.
Um, if you take this in kind of two, two big chunks, as Counselor Zarett said, the first, the first batch is this amended set of easements that did go to council last year. And city council, you know, voted to authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute the easements. And over the last year, it's, it's taken, you know, every bit of that year to deal with the easement language along with all the other kind of moving parts on the project. And so over the course of that time, the easements have changed. And the city attorney thought that they changed enough that, that it should go back to this process. So it started, it went back to council, back to property and back to full council to kind of reauthorize the mayor. So, you know, we should talk through those. And there, those are kind of like very general in nature, but they cover a lot of ground. And then this other element is, so, so the general in nature covers utilities. And then this other part of it is the ever-source agreement. The ever-source easements, which is basically more detailed. And it's the, it's the specific easement that is associated with electrical utilities. And so just kind of through some, I don't know, just not enough communication, you know, that ever-source request was not included in the original packet submitted a couple of weeks ago. But it's really, it's kind of the thing that it's the, it's the piece that effectuates the utility easement. So you have the utility easement, it's going to be granted to the developer. And then the city will also grant ever-source the specific easement for them to put their electrical conduit into, into, into the, into the ground, basically. So what I wanted to do, if it's okay, is share a map. So this is the information that was submitted in the packet this past round. I'm gonna share that. So in the packet, what was provided was the the past city council vote from last year, the initial language that was attached to that easement at that time. Then we included the new easement language and then a new map. And so to get us started, I thought it would be better to start with the map. Can everyone see a map? It's kind of colorful with some purples.
I see.
Okay. So, you know, there's definitely a lot of easements and they're broken into two, two categories. There's the easements that the city is granting to One Industrial Loft. And then there's easements that One Industrial Loft is granting back to the city. And you can see the map here along the top is, it's really the bike path. So that there's a series of easements that kind of go around the, the bike path. And that's kind of the back of the development property. And then you can see along the bottom is where the new parking area is along Ferry Street with the multi-use path and the railing. And then on the, on the right side of the screen is sort of a later phase of the project, but this is where there will be additional parking and infrastructure installed and the potential future bike path connection up to the rail trail. So this is a bit of a mouthful to get, you know, unpacked, but basically those pink easement areas are for, to allow the developer to cross over city property and for the developer to have utilities that cross the city property to serve the parcel. And one of the biggest changes here from the version a year ago was, at that time, the easements were presented as temporary. And that was one of the biggest changes of substances, that these are proposed to be permanent easements. And that was a request just for consistency and I think predictability from the, from the developers' end to have sort of the permanent rights to cross over this area. There were some discussions about the rail trail and if that needed to be closed for any reason. And so that was really one of the second more significant changes from the first version. The first version had a really, a very short closure of the bike path option. And so through a lot of discussion between the mayor's office, my office, DPW, the developer, and the rail trail committee, the new language does allow for closure up to five days with, with a series of notice requirements and a detour. You know, the, if the rail trail had to be closed for a duration, there would be an alternate route established. So, so along the perimeter, along the top where the rail trail is, is where the city is giving the developer easements, the right to pass over and to install utilities. And then those, like the bluish hash marks at the bottom in the right are the developer giving the city easements to have, you know, the partners, so the, along the pond, part of that parking area and part of the multi-use path is on private property. It's on the developer's property. And so we want to have public access to that area. And so that's what, that's one of the key things that this easement area does, similar to the area on the right. One of the benefits to the city is that through the easement agreements, the developer is agreeing to maintain the surface areas of the easements, so landscaping. And in some cases, snow plowing of the sidewalks are going to be things that the, the, the developer does on behalf of the city. And those are, those are perceived benefits. I think I'll stop for a minute. I'm going to stop my screen share so maybe I can see everybody and I can put it back up if there's questions or if the developer, if Mike wants to say anything else that I might have missed. And I was a mouthful.
Yeah, actually, if it's okay, I just wanted, I did want to open it up to Mr. Michon since we're, we're, we're discussing these easements at on behalf of his project, which is quite a pretty large undertaking on his part and certainly a big project for the city. So, Mr. Michon, if you just, if you had any kind of opening remarks right now about the importance of these? And I know that there was some miscommunication about the ever-source easements and we just had to work that out on our end. So if you could, if you had any comments you wanted to make, that would be the time.
Thanks, Counselor. I mean, I really don't, I mean, this is really, you know, in a nutshell, this is what we had a year ago or two years ago, whenever, you know, it was my understanding, the mayor had authorization to sign off on least the electrical ever-source easements. So I mean, the only substantial change, and I guess, you know, again, I'm sure the city attorney is there to protect the city, which I understand, is really the language of permanent versus temporary. Other than that, everything else has been, this is the same. So the biggest thing for the electrical, if you understand now, is I mean, you're granting, it's nothing to do with me. It's the city granting easement to ever-source to be able to come through the city property, to get to my property, to get power to Ferry Street, that's all.
Okay. Great. And actually, Mr. Bag, can you just clarify? I've just, I just want mostly for the public. I just really want to clarify exactly the difference between the way that this agenda item was presented and this discussion, these ever-source easements. And the more I read this, the more they really seem like the initial language and the ever-source easements are really one and the same. So I'm not, is there any clarification you can offer there? And mostly just because it's, I don't see any real difference.
I guess the main difference is that the initial packet of material is, we were, we've been calling these the reciprocal easements because the city is giving the developer rights and we're giving the developer rights. So we're just, we're swapping rights. And so that, that was already vetted, you know, in the version one, and then they changed over time. And it, it was always, I think Mr. Michon's correct, that it was always envisioned utilities being installed and those permissions being granted. But I think the only thing that's necessary is to have an extra vote to authorize the mayor to execute any, an easement with ever-source. So the original packet was for the city to enter into these easement agreements with, with One Industrial Loft LLC. And that's important, necessary and good, but she also needs to be, she needs to be authorized to execute and like enter into, enter into and execute the agreement with ever-source. And that's, so it's Part A is the general granting of rights, including the installation, installation of utilities. And then the secondary step is the, the permission for ever-source to actually do the work. And it's really something that ever-source is demanding that they have their own separate easement agreement executed with the city. What Mr. Michon's referring to is, you know, has this already been done? You know, we also did something very similar about a year ago for bringing power to the first building. And it was a similar situation of things needing to happen as quickly as possible. And so city council authorized the mayor to negotiate and execute that easement with ever-source. But it was specific to that building one had a, had a strip. It goes from a, it goes from a pole underground to the building one. And this is just another, it's, ever-source wants a specific easement for this, for the utilities going around the back. And so that's kind of what we're, we're doing both steps at once.
And we don't have schematics. If I recall correctly, when we did this last time, we had some, some degree of schematics for the ever-source easements for building one, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, but we don't have them this time.
We do have, you know, some of the work was done when, when we were doing the Mass Works funded project this past summer and fall. All that work adjacent to the bike path, the retaining wall that was built, you know, on the, you know, to support the private development. Some of these conduits, so conduits is the, it's basically the pipes that are empty, but the pipes were laid already. So the conduit got installed around, halfway around the, you know, halfway around the back of the property. And as Mr. Michon said, that was always anticipated. In order for ever-source to actually physically send their equipment through the conduit, they want this, this extra easement, you know, language has to be in place.
Are there any new, or, so if I'm understanding correctly, then all of the infrastructure is in place for ever-source to bring power to this development? There are no additional easements in the sense of needing to lay additional, granting additional conduits being installed that we would need to review?
I, I guess I would say that I don't think it's all been installed, but some of it has been. I think based on, so, so the, the developer has sent around, you know, some emails from last summer that I guess it would be nice to have them packaged up. So you could understand, you know, the outline that I had shown the map before that with the ring around the bike path. You know, that's the general area where these easements will go. And then there is some documentation of where the actual utilities will be within that. So I think for the city council meeting on Wednesday, that, that map could be produced pretty easily to show that.
That would be helpful. By a show of hands, either of the other members of the committee, do either of you have questions for the planner? I think Counselor Flood.
I just want to clarify, this is all underground then that we're talking about now? It's like, when we say pass over, it's not because the wires are going overhead. It's like just passing over the property, but these conduits are physically underground. So this is new power going underground, is that correct?
Mostly, yes. For, if you're familiar with the area now, and I, I can dig around and I, maybe, maybe it's worthwhile for me to spend a second after I explain it to find the emails with the random, you know, attachments attached to them. On Love Field Street, where the new parking was installed, we also installed the electric vehicle charging station. So there's dwellings on the other side. So there, ever-source is going to put in a new pole. They're going to go overhead over Love Field to a new pole, which was, again, it was always anticipated. And then from the pole, it goes underground.
Okay.
And around the back, is that correct, Mr. Michon? So you're understanding that all the, the utilities, once they loop around the back of the bike path, are going underground?
That's correct. So the location of where, just like you said, where the bike charging stations are, the reason why those were located there is that's because that's where ever-source located the telephone pole that'll take the power from the other side of Love Field, bring it down the pole, hit your charging station, go underground under the bike path, through city property, the back of my property, which will then give us power, the ability to hook up power to building five and building seven.
Great.
Counselor Kuzinski, any questions? I'm sorry, Counselor Flood.
No, I'm sorry, I just, thanks for the clarification. As I hear the wind blowing outside, I'm thinking of future infrastructure blowing in the wind here.
Underground is the best way.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that's happening.
I, I also feel the wind here or hear it very clearly. It's very pronounced today. First of all, let me say, Mike, I really appreciate everything you've been doing. And I think the city of East Hampton is very proud of, of the work and the development that's occurring at One Ferry. So kudos to you and your crew for that. In terms of the, the permanent nature, I would imagine that underground utilities would always be a permanent easement. And so those factors, they really wouldn't change. You'd lay them, lay the wires down and they'll be there for years and years and years. But so is, am I missing something here with regard to temporary versus permanent? Or was that an oversight of some sort? Planner Bag or anyone?
Mike, what do you think about that? I mean.
Well, I think, I think that's, that's, that was the whole point. You know, that is to, you know, why would we have temporary easements when everything is permanent? So that's, that's when I, anyway, so why do we have temporary easements? You know, that doesn't make sense. So that was the only difference of the change of the temporary versus the permanent because not only is it under the ground forever, but we have to, you know, there's maintenance that has to happen either with ever-source or, or us. So why would you ever make something temporary? So it sounds like, you know, it was just a combination of an oversight between all of us, that we didn't, you know, it kind of evolved.
And it certainly makes sense that the utility company would want to be, be involved and have the easement be granted from the city to the utility for anything passing over our property, just as you may very well have to grant easements to the utility company to enter to some point on the property.
Which, which we will, absolutely.
To the, to the masthead or what we, I think of as a masthead underground. So it's really not a masthead. But yeah, so that, that's all pretty much standard stuff. Has there been any changes with regard to the, the blue areas? I remember that the city was going to be involved with, by the pond and, and the public would have a right to go there and you'd maintain the area, which I, I think is, is a great benefit. I, I think to everybody involved, the public and to your project. So that makes a lot of sense. Has there been a change there?
No.
No, so that's all the same. And, and going back to the, to the, to the, to the, almost from the street to the bike path. I'm envisioning from facing One Ferry off to the right, I'm looking from my area here and going all the way back, there was a second blue line there. That was for parking access for what, and there was, there was going to be some power generation there, which I think is yours, not ours.
Correct.
Future, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the blue, the blue hash line to the.
Sorry, I, I'm not sure I can turn that down.
That's okay, so the blue, the, the blue hash line to the east of the project, which is parking area.
Yep.
So that's going to eventually be, you know, with the, the new bike path connection.
Right.
So that's it, that's easement area eight. So easement area eight will be, you know, open to public parking, you know, with obviously restrictions, you know, no overnight parking.
Sure.
And et cetera. But that, you know, that, that's part of actually our diff program, which will come later, at a later date. But that's, that, that has always been like that.
Okay, and, and if you've refreshed my memory, if I recall correctly, the pink area at Ferry Street, bike at the end, the bike path, going, what I think of as north, looks like you were going to be doing some parking for the project in that, in that area, but it might also be a little bit off of your property, but somewhat on city property, is that, is that true?
I'm, I'm not sure where you're talking.
I'm, I'm at Ferry and the bike path. Just I'm sorry, I can't point to it. If you.
Okay, yeah, at the.
Almost a Ferry, Love Field and Pleasant where the pink is there.
Yeah, yeah, so there's actually a retaining wall has been built there. And the city, the parking is actually on city property.
Right, so.
In order to grant the public to park there, that's why we have that blue additional hash line to let the public.
So the blue, the public can get there and you can, your, your people can get there and use, use the area. And that all, that all, that all makes sense. So I don't see a lot of big changes here. No, none have been disclosed to us. I don't have any further questions. I, and I thank you for answering those.
Thank you. And thank you, you know, your, your previous statements about, you know, the project. I appreciate, you know, everything that the city has done. You know, the city has been a major stakeholder as well. So, you know, I really, this has been a very nice public, you know, private venture for everybody to, you know, participate in. So, you know, I may be the one, you know, holding the ball and running with it. But again, the city has been very helpful and, and Counselor you have and all the other counselors have as well. Because without your help, we wouldn't be here either, so thank you.
I, I think the boat rises is, as, as the whole, the whole ocean kind of rises a little bit. And East Hampton gets a little better and we all do.
Absolutely.
Well, every good running back needs a good offensive line. I guess my only question, just to be picky, Counselor, I mean, sorry, Planner Bag? I don't know.
He gets accused of being on the council lots of times.
He's, he's the 10th member, well, maybe.
They're trying to add to your workload.
Um, how will? Will they'll be, how will the public be aware of potential bike path closure? Will it be advertised on the bike path or, I'm just, I'm just, because I'm just glancing over this here. It just says 30 days advance notice, but will that, will there be signs on the bike path? Or how will that be communicated to users of the Manhattan Rail Trail?
I mean, I think we have some ability to talk about how that works once, and if there is a closure proposed. I believe, and I, I'm just struggling because I have a hard time sometimes switching to find the document, which I can do. But I believe there's language about signs. So, you know, reasonable signage. You know, if, if the, if the closure has to be the entire path. Last, last summer, we did pretty good working in coordination with the city's contractor and the developer to leave a lane open. Or, and we even carved off a side, a side lane to, to keep it open. So there's minimal signage that needs to be done for that. But if it's a full closure, we're talking about backing all the way up to where the sewage treatment plant is and putting in appropriate signage and directions. So you go up, is it Goslin? You go up the little hill and then you hit Ferry Street. So you'd be redirected that way. And then if you're coming from, you know, from behind the mills, there would need to be appropriate signage to direct people to whatever the path is chosen to, to direct it. You know, from behind the mills, there would need to be appropriate signage to direct people to whatever the path is chosen to to direct it. So. Um, I mean, there's no, there's nothing specific listed in the easement language. Um, so we would use social media and we would probably use, you know, the city council's platform and we would use signs to raise awareness. And the rail trail committee, you know, Mr. Mishan and I came, went to the railroad committee and talked to them and they were. They were appreciative of being informed that this this, you know, is a situation that could occur. And they were supportive of the signs and the detour effort. So. Um, I think what we did was notification to the police department, the mayor's office and the rail trail committee. You know, that's about as specific as as we got in terms of what would actually be in the easement language.
I'm reading it while we're talking. It does mention signage in the P C, uh, bike path committee. Yep.
Mister, Mister Chair, may I follow up?
Yes.
Uh, on on your question, I I was just envisioning on the process happening. Uh, and I'm presuming that although there would be closure, it would be a temporary closure of some sort. Five days, 10 days, what 30, whatever it takes, but then everything would reopen again to its normal state. Uh, if I might also just make a request of the planner. Uh, that in addition to doing all the things you've described to help publicize the 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 closure. That some guidance, so some level of thought be given to putting signs further away on the bike path. Let's say downtown or maybe at at the at the river. So that anyone entering the bike path from a distant location, bringing their little kids. And thinking they're not, you know, they're going to be on a bike path the whole way to their destination. Uh, but now all of a sudden they're going to be on Ferry Street, at least would be cognizant of of that. Particularly with little ones. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think when it came up at the committee, the the man handrail truck committee, I mean, I think it goes to a bigger question, which is. The committee itself, the city doesn't really have any other policy for closing the rail trail. Um, so this is actually above and beyond what what we have, which is nothing. Um, you know, DPW could close other i- in emergencies that could close without any notice or any requirement. So I think the committee felt. Supportive of Mr. Mishan, at least agreeing to even try to do the detour in in some sign. So I think. I think if we, so the way it got worded was, I do not have it in front of me. So it's, you know, five days maximum. During the busy period, you know, which we 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 discussed kind of this duration. And then it could be longer in the the lesser used periods of time. So. You know, I think 14 days. So I mean, I think. Um, Mr. Kuzinski, I heard what you're saying. I think it's more of just a coordination of if and when this happens. We'd probably want to coordinate with DPW to potentially put up some extra signs a little further out.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Good question, Counselor. Counselor Flood, do you have any follow up?
Uh, no, I mean, my question was in regards to if we knew a timeline and if this would be during busy season or not. Um, but I think Planner Bag just touched on that. So, thank you.
Well, I don't have anything further. As the planner knows, I just initially just want to make sure that we buttoned everything up. And I just need to kind of let it marinate a little bit to have a better understanding of the discussion with ever source. So, um, we only have one member of the public here and that happens to be Counselor Gomez. Do you, Counselor Gomez, do you have any input or questions?
No, I do not. Thanks.
Um, so if there is any, if there's, we're gonna probably need to take, oh, Counselor, uh, Planner Bag.
Well, I had dug around for the email. I I wanted to share my screen again and just show you the, what I believe we would present Wednesday to show a little bit. More of the detailed. Um, location for the for the, um, for the ever source work. And so. So this is a map. I understand that the yellow is not going to be legible at this scale, but. Um, on the page left, you can see Love Field Street and the the two red marks, the red triangles are the new poles. That I tried to describe before. So one gets set on the residential side. And I think it replaces an existing pole. And then it goes overhead, um, to the behind the EV chargers. And if you were out there today, there's, um, some PB. Uh, PVC pipe sticking up. And that's the, that's the conduit. So the pole will go in and the conduit will run run from the pole. Then it follows that red line, um, to the right and then around the back. And and then there's those, um, hexagon shapes. Those are called hex holes. So that to my kno- to my knowledge, to that point, those hex holes is what was the conduit was installed this past summer. And then you can see it loops down and into the private development parcel. So I think the only, you know, the the important thing to note is that the red line does continue along the the rest of the back of the pro- property. To, um, that other side. So to my knowledge, that that work has not been done yet. And so that would be. You know, that would likely be some areas where we would see activity alongside the bike path, um, sometime in the future. Um, you know, Mike, I don't know if you have more information on that, but this is the general schematic that we show. Um, that, you know, again, the the first, the colorful image, the easements generally. Show this area and then these show the actual utility lines within that area.
Yeah, this would be helpful to bring to the to the council. Um, Mr. Mishan, what, did you have anything to add with to that?
Yeah, sure. So so again, just to e- expand on what Jeff mentioned. So, you know, the purpose, the reason why, so. Where the pole location is on the backside of the EV chargers, I had ever source stake that. Okay, so they are aware of, you know, obviously that we, that stake location. Was their location on where they wanted everything to come from. So after we had them stake that, we located our underground conduit and all our underground conduits in the ground. For the electric. So there won't be any, we won't have to be on the bike path at all. To to do any work because it's hard, the conduit's already there. So, I mean, the only possible thing that we may need to do is to run a us, uh, another piece of pipe for like, uh, for, um. For, um, spectrum cable. But I, but but don't quote me on it. I I do, I think we put that in as well. So I'm pretty sure that everything's in the ground. So we, you know, I'm hoping we won't have to do anything with the bike path in this location. Really, the the only other location that we're going to be dealing with is to the north of the property to the east side. And that's going to be years down the road. And the only reason we're going to need to get there is really to run a sewer line. Tie in to the sewer that's on the fourth part of the bike path.
Great. And this is a question for the planner, maybe Counselor Kuzinski. That hole. For that, the the those poles you mentioned, Planner Bag, did we approve those or is that coming? I can't remember. Were those approved with the EV charger discussion or?
Oh, to my knowledge, they, to my knowledge, they have not. So, um. This, not to be too casual about it. I mean, it's kind of a big game of chicken as to what comes first. So a lot of this is that this whole, the whole reciprocal easement discussion was really important to have coming first. And then this authorization for the mayor to execute the easement with ever source to to go into the conduits. And then I do believe there's probably another poll hearing that ever source would have to seek before they place it. The council did some of this, um, last summer when when that around building one, they ever source. We we did this whole rigmarole with the getting the easements, um, you know, approved by councils. So the mayor could execute them and then all. And then they came in with the poll hearing request. So. Yeah, Mike, I don't know if if ever source has talked to you about when they're supposed to set that. But there would probably be an additional step still, which are a poll here, which is pretty common, actually, and easy easier to navigate than this, but.
Yeah, that's an issue. I just couldn't remember. I I didn't, I didn't think we had.
I don't think so.
Okay, well, I have nothing further. Does do they, again, any other members of the committee have anything else to add?
Uh, I just, if I may, wanted to say, are we replacing the original authorization to the mayor? With with new language and should we also be sure that we have reservations for municipal? The right for the municipality to use a portion of the conduit. Because we always manage to reserve that for the city. And I, if we're going to replace something, then I just wanted to be sure. That we kept that in there. Mike?
Yeah, I I thought, you know, I thought, and again, this is, you know, I don't have the writing in front of me, but the the whole purpose originally. Least the spirit of what we were trying to do was to be able to have the mayor sign off on easements. So we wouldn't have to bog you guys down with all this, you know, because it's really kind of mundane, really. I mean, I, you know, I, that was my interpretation, was the mayor was going to be able to sign every source easements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know how something, you know, I'm not sure exactly what changed here.
It it's one, just one of the things that we've always done whenever we do a poll, uh, location or any underground easements. That the city grants. Uh, so Jeff, I just would ask you to take, be sure we took, we dealt with that.
Yes. Do you mind reiterating your interest? Is it the, so the conduit underground going to the back of the property? That's already been laid out. So I can confirm whether there's any other.
That that the easement, that 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 the city retain whatever rights they have for. Usage of, uh, of of the of that conduit. As we always retain the rights. I'm thinking that if if we ever decide to, uh, do our own signals of some sort. Uh, this language originally originated when there was signal wires for the municipality on a single cross arm. Uh, and that if you look at some of the old easements, I can talk to you about this later.
Sure. I mean, do you think it, do you think it has to come out in the vote or is it just something that?
Always had come out in a vote, that this, that in any granting of the easement, the municipality reserve the right.
Yeah, what I'll do is, I mean, I think this is with regard to the ever source, um, easement specifically.
Right. It really would have nothing to do with Mr. Mishan.
Right. So, you know, what, what I can do is I'll pull the, I'll pull the actual ever source agreement that got executed for building one. And I'll I'll send you the language and you can let me know. And I think some, just for, so we're all on the same page. I think what, I think Mr. Mishan's was desiring more flexibility from the mayor. And I think what we ran into was that we do not have this, like, as far as I've been told, that we do not have. That ability to. Allow the authorization of unknown easements set forth in the future. So it is, it's a case by case basis, Mike. And I think. The 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 flexibility that you're, that we're getting here with ever sourcing that we got with building one is that. Um, city council is not getting the fully fleshed out ever source language with the final ever source plan. Um, we're, we're advancing the approval for this easement with the language in the map to get hashed out. You know, and that that was beneficial to you for building one and saved a couple of months. And so that's, that's the degree of flexibility. I think we have now.
At this point, yeah, I I.
I don't know that.
I don't see a need to put it into the language on the approval, but I do see a need for from the council, but certainly with the easement itself.
Okay.
When the mayor signs it.
Yeah, I would bring that up at the, uh, council here in Council Kuzinski. It's a good point and one that keeps coming up. Uh, I don't have anything further. Um, I think that these should probably be two separate motions. One to, um, accept the. I'm just looking back at the language. Um, one to, um, accept, um, the, uh, allow the mayor to enter into. Uh, the grant easements to Mr. Mishon in regards to the one industrial lofts. Um, project and then a second motion to allow the mayor to enter into. Uh, negotiations with ever source for easements. I I think that's the way we probably should do this.
Well, then I I would like to move to, uh. Move both easements, uh, as af- as the aforementioned, uh, easements are described.
Chair, can I have you just repeat those so I can get them accurately into the record? And after that, I would second that. I just want to get the language correct.
Yeah, so we would have one motion, which would basically be a motion to a agree to allow the mayor to. And and correct me if I'm wrong, Planner, but.
No, I think you have it, yeah.
Who will allow the mayor to negotiate, um, uh, uh, a, um, agreement to grant a per- a perpetual grant of easement. Uh, to one industrial lofts. Um, and then we would have a second motion. Uh, to allow the mayor to enter into an agreement to grant a perpetual easement to ever source. As well for that same area, essentially. But, sound right, Jeff?
Yeah. And the, I mean, the good news is that for the perpetual easements with one industrial loft. The negotiation has completed. I mean, you're seeing the final product. So so that should be pretty straightforward. And then the ever source one. Although we're just, you know, we're just trying to get it done together. That's really what we're pushing right now to to have them done together. There's really probably not a lot of negotiation that will have to happen. It's just, it's just time with ever source. They take a lot of time to. To do all their dotting i's and crossing t's. And that's what we're trying to just skip ahead a little bit with that.
All right, frankly, this is a record, just a council, the recommendation is the full council, so we can make sure that we have the correct language at the council hearing as well. So if if I would understand correctly, Counselor, because it's you, you, you made a motion to accept both. Is that true?
That is correct.
All right. So we have a motion, um, on on both of those measures. Um, I I'll take a second.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Counselor Flood on both of those, uh, on a motion to both. Uh, uh, enter into an agreement, uh, with the easements with one industrial loft, as well as to, um, enter into agreement with ever source. For easements around the one ferry, um, property. Uh, I, are there any, is there any discussion? I'm happy to vote on both of these in tandem. Um, any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, uh, I will take a vote. Counselor Kuzinski.
Aye.
Counselor Flood.
Aye.
And I am also an aye, but just please let the record show that that those are, those are two votes taken as a one single motion.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so motion passed three, nothing. Um. And, um, Mr. Mishan, I I tend to dot my i's and cross my t's. So if I, if I seem like I'm really strict about these things, it's only because I like to make sure that things go smoothly, don't make any mistakes. And I I do truly appreciate this significant labor, uh, and project that you've taken on. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your help. I appreciate it.
And, uh, as always, Counselor, Planner Bag. Thanks for all your work. Um, is there anything further today?
No, I think the only question I had in, just because I think if we can have Mr. Mishan join the meeting on Wednesday, do you have any sense of the time, like time slot? On that agenda when this might come up? I know you can't predict it, but I just curious, do you know where it falls on the agenda?
Yeah, it's a good question. So interestingly, it's not a public hearing, right? Because we're just authorizing the mayor. Um, I could talk to the city council president and find out. Normally, we we'd be towards the end because it would come out with the property report. Um, but I can talk to the city council president and and try to get a an idea and. Notify you and Mr. Mishan if that's acceptable.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I, you know, I'll I'll be on the meeting, uh, for for the duration. But if if we could hone it in a little bit, even, we can give Mike some direction on the time on Wednesday.
Okay, anything further?
Um, just one more question. Sorry to be so tedious. Um, what would, what do you think would be the best way to transmit that additional map? Of the, um, electrical services? Do you want to try to? Uh, having email it around to people or just bring it forth at the meeting?
I would send it to the clerk and the city council president and they could, they can decide. Um, how to disseminate, but probably just if you send it to the clerk and the president, the president can probably. admit it as additional information for the packet and then send it out just at the risk of, just kind of following the, the chain there. So that, that's, that would be what I would recommend.
Perfect.
Okay. Well, seeing no other issues and no other new business before us, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Well, we have a, a motion from Counselor Kuzinski and a second from Counselor Flood. And I will take a vote. Counselor Kuzinski.
Aye.
Counselor Flood.
Aye.
And I also am in the affirmative to adjourn. So three, nothing. And we don't have any other meeting time set at this time. So have a great night, everybody. And thank you as always for your availability and time.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you very much.
Have a great evening.